Hi, welcome everyone. I'd like to convene this business meeting. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess the first order is the correspondence. Ms. Santos?
Yes. So on February 10th, we received an email on baseball from Jeffrey Sharick. On February 11th, we have Diane Olivero, positive feedback on McCoon Lane. We, on February 18th, David Martin, O'Ben School's proposal. On February 23rd, we have Kaylee O'Toole regarding girls varsity basketball. February 24th, Richard Segelman regarding Roosevelt's Nurse's namesake. On February 26th, we have Akash Babu regarding Oyster Bay East Norwich election questions. On February 24th, we have Maria Rutiglio, Rutigliano, I'm sorry, plans for return of the ninth through 11th graders. On March 1st, we have Maria Paredees regarding seventh grade board seat. We have, March 2nd, Maria Rutigliano regarding a return of 10th to 12th graders. Mark Goldsmith on March 8th regarding varsity baseball. Lou Carleo regarding the coach Pisani on March 8th. We have Thomas Rizzuto regarding the coach. And we have Robert Benkal regarding athletic chaperone issue.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Now I'd like to turn over the superintendent of schools for our student recognition of winter athletes.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski, and good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see everybody back for this award ceremony. So I want to invite Mr. Trantowski to the podium. And I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate all athletes. It was a pleasure watching you fencing, playing basketball, wrestling is always the highlight of my day to be around you. So congratulations, keep up the good work, and looking forward to many more months of activities and good times. So thank you. Mr. Trantowski?
All right. First off, I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education, Dr. Yanni, Dr. Mohol, and Ms. Freeman for allowing me to speak for a little while this evening. Just to recap, on January 4th, the world of high school sports reopened for sports that were considered low and moderate risk. For Oyster Bay, this meant bowling, fencing, and winter track were back in action. The month of January felt good as athletes checked into practices and began the familiar routine of preparing themselves for practice and competition. While their facial coverings prevent us from seeing their smiles, we know they were present because we, the staff and the district, were smiling too. On February 1st, Oyster Bay once again became a fully operational high school athletic program with the approval of the high-risk sports: basketball, competitive cheer, and wrestling. A week later, the modified winter 2 season began, and all of our team spaces were once again filled with the sounds of both competitiveness and joy. No matter the sport or the level, students were once again had the chance to find their niche in the athletic program. Completing these sports seasons, whether they were a four-week or eight-week season, may be the biggest victory of the year. I thank the parents, coaches, athletes, and district for doing everything they could to benefit our teams and athletes. I also thank the custodial staff, school nurses, our athletic trainer support staff, our live stream provider, and all of the other schools that we competed against in Section 8 for making this challenging season a success. This truly was a team effort. For the recognition for the winter, we'll start by just going over that each season, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association awards qualifying teams a Scholar-Athlete Team Award. The team's total grade point average for 75% of the roster must be 90 or above for this recognition. We had five of our six low and moderate-risk varsity teams earn this title, which is a great accomplishment for our great school. The teams that won this award were girls' winter track, girls' fencing, girls' bowling, boys' fencing, and boys' winter track. The girls' winter track team had the highest team average of a 95.35. Again, this was the low and moderate-risk sports only that were considered at this time. High-risk sports of basketball, cheerleading, and wrestling, those will be released in April. So as we re-enter normalcy, some sports within the county decided to continue to recognize championship teams and athletes, and, I'm sorry, championship teams and athletes at the conference and county level. The first teams I'd like to recognize this evening are our boys' and girls' fencing teams. I'd like to congratulate Coach Kemp and Assistant Coach Brooker for leading both of these teams to regular season records that earned both the boys and girls the title of Division II champions. For our individual award winners, I'll do the boys' fencing team first. Neil Metta earned all-county second team. Michael Masnio won all-county honorable mention. Lucas Shade won all-county honorable mention. And Cal Tumanello won all-county honorable mention. On the girls' side, Aurora Ashatino, all Long Island and all-county first team. Rachel Kowalski, all-county first team. Anna Silver, all-county first team. Jillian Hagerson, all-county second team. Brianna Boa, all-county honorable mention. Megan Cox, all-county honorable mention. And Taylor Hall, all-county honorable mention. Congratulations to both teams in the fencing program. Again, Coach Kemp and Coach Brooker for taking over. Kind of into the second week, they began to take over, but the fencing program should be very proud. A team, two teams with a lot of consistency that continually put Oyster Bay on the map with their success. So congratulations to both teams.
Do we have some other certificates?
Certificates you want to announce?
So Anna Silver. Jillian? Jillian? Brianna Boa? Megan? Taylor?
Neil Metta? Congratulations. Rachel Kowalski? Congratulations. Michael Masnio? Lucas Shade? Congratulations. Cal Tumanello? Congratulations. Aurora Ashatino? Congratulations.
At this time, fencing guests, we're just going to ask you, do we want them to exit from a certain, at a certain point?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay. So fencing members and guests could just exit through this door over here. We're going to recognize the basketball and wrestling teams. Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, thanks for coming. Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations. I can handle that. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for your help. Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Later. See you soon. Bye-bye. Okay, welcome. I just want to, I'm going to just reiterate some of the words I said to the fencing team that was here, but without being repetitive. I just wanted to basically recap the winter season that we just endured and what an unusual and unprecedented circumstance that these athletes went through. We have to remember that we essentially had two, two seasons of the winter. We had the low and moderate-risk sports. Fencing was a moderate-risk sport, along with the low-risk sports that started in January. And then at the end of the month, in January, we got word that your sports, the high-risk sports, were going to be permitted to be played with the, with the, the local public, the Nassau County Department of Health giving us guidance on how to do that. So we, you guys, the coaching staff, the support staff, everybody that was involved with athletics, we quickly had our, we had our pieces in place, we assembled, and you guys made it. You guys and girls made it through a really strange season. It was a four-week season, but in those four weeks, you know, the practices, before you knew it, you started your first games, your first meet. We had some bumps in the road, as to be expected, as we re-enter a little bit of normalcy over the course of a season. But my congratulations goes to you, your coaches, your teammates, even the ones that are not being recognized like you guys are this evening. But again, this was a winter like no other. And again, you know, just for the Board of Education, just to understand really what this winter was like. So the athletes that are in the room now are representatives of the girls' basketball team, which was a four-week season, and the wrestling team, which was a four-week season. And I think all told, I think our wrestlers were scheduled six or eight matches, and they might have lost one that was from their schedule, and the girls' basketball team might have lost one as well. We wound up postponing one, and one might have been lost. So all told, for our athletes to make it through 90% of their scheduled seasons where other, other schools in the county, I think Conference One, for example, for basketball, they might have only played one or two games. So the fact that our girls got in five or six or seven games, and our wrestlers the same, is a real testament to the dedication. And just again, for the Board of Education, I didn't say this before, when our athletes, our student athletes heard that there was going to be a season, you know, the buy-in was real. Our participation numbers were real. They were, you know, the student athletes really wanted this, and they came back for it. So I'm very proud of the way that these athletes came through. So some more winter award winners from the wrestling team, making, earning all-county was Yanni Landro. Also earning all-county, Eric Velasquez. And earning all-conference, Stephen McAvoy. From our girls varsity basketball team, Emma Kelly earned all-county. Gabby Treble earned all-county honorable mention. And Caitlin Kelly earned all-conference. So congratulations to those members of those teams. And now to present the awards to those athletes is Dr. Yanni.
Congratulations to all of you. So proud of you. Yanni? Eric? Stephen McAvoy? Emma Kelly? Gabriella Treble? And Caitlin Kelly? Congratulations to all of you. Have a good night, and so proud of you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
The superintendent's report?
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate all the students that participated in the musical this weekend. It was great. I attended several rehearsals, and on Friday, I, I attended, and it was just impressive to see the students performing so well. And I want to also thank Mr. Firmino and the entire team on the job well done. Sports is back, as you have seen tonight, a lot of the awards, and I attended several games, the first soccer game on the, on the new turf, and the field hockey game, and it was great. Tennis, volleyball, and it was just exciting to see parents alive, to see the students and parents in the school together. This, I have to say, was the best week of my superintendency, because this, for the first time this week, I saw the whole school in. First time, all the grades were in, everybody, everybody here, and it was just exciting. Put your device away. Oyster Bay was, was a great event, and was March 9th, so I think it went very well, and we're going to look forward in the future to do maybe a similar event again. I'm very proud of the students, and you've seen on the website, they've done a lot of work with Ms. Lasher and Ms. Menuzzo on the No Place for Hate. They've done a lot of work. Today, News 12 was here, interviewed some students. Just so proud of the students, and I always said from day one, I'm impressed about the maturity of our students, how well they work together, and how well they support each other. So, so proud, and I'm sure that they satisfy all the requirements, and, but will keep the community and keep the board posted on the, on the award for the No Place to Hate for our school. Tonight, I will present the third budget presentation, but I want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for their support. The community should know how much, how many hours board members spent on reviewing the budget presentation, reviewing all the documents. So the presentation they will see tonight is the culmination of many, many hours of work. And so I want to thank the board for their support during this budget process, and, and also supporting the vision of empowering all our students to achieve excellence. The budget presentation is not just a presentation and, and putting the numbers together, but is also the work done behind the scene and the legislative work that, that we do. This past two weekends, two weeks, we had meeting with Senator Gohn and also legislator LaFazan advocating for, for some, you know, important aspects of, of the budget, and the community should know how much work it goes behind the scenes. So I'm proud to be part of this team. I'm proud of the work that we are doing every day to present the community with a budget that is physically responsible and, and that can be supported. The Athletic, very proud of the work done. It's so nice to see the students after school, spend a lot of time with them and getting to know them. Before we move on, we are 555, so we're getting close to 1,000, so keep pushing. We're doing, we're posting a lot of, a lot of the students' accomplishments and a lot of the work they do inside of and outside of the classrooms. So for the communities and, that, that social media is an important vehicle to have a, a clear view of what's going on inside the schools. So with that, I believe we're moving into the next part of student recognition that was done, so.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Yanni. The next section is approval of the minutes for the business meeting, February 9th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And now we have the business facilities report and the third budget presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Kowalski. So if you, if you look at the presentation, I mean, one of, one of the most important thing, and this presentation is going to be posted on the website together with all the other presentations, so I encourage the, the community just to review and ask us questions if, if something is not clear, or if we can clarify. You can call my office anytime. So when we look at the budget presentation, I mean, one thing that we need to keep our eyes on is our mission and our vision, which is empowering all students to achieve excellence and provide the students with the support that they need to make sure that we can move this district forward and move this district to, to the next level. And we have what it takes. We have great administration, we have great teachers, but the most important thing that we have is our students. The level, that, the caliber of students that we have is something that we should be very, very proud, and, and I'm sure you are. When you look at the budget mission, the idea is to promote the district goals and to make sure that we meet the students' needs every single day, make sure that they have the necessary resource to be, to be successful. This has been a challenging year. March 14th marked the, the one year sort of a, anniversary of, of this pandemic, but there are a lot of things that we did, that the district did, that we should be very proud, and that's something that is, that is important always to, to keep an eye on. And look at the focus for the budget 21, 22 is, first most important thing is stay within the tax cap and sort of have a, an eye on, on building a budget that keeps an eye on the COVID expense and what September will look like. So build something in the budget that, that stays focused on that, and also anticipate some of the effect of the, the lack of reduction of state aid, whatever that may be. So when I look at the budget overview, it's a very simple equation. You want the revenue to equal the expense, and there are some variables, there are a lot less, we have a lot less control. So if you look at the salary and benefits, those are contractual obligation, you have all the contractual service that we have, but also we have state mandates that we have to deal with. And, and that's some of the work that we have done, that the board has done, working with legislators, looking, working with, with our, with our senator, pushing for, for certain things, and trying to find some kind of flexibility in those state mandates could alleviate some of the expense in the long run. When you look at the revenue, state aid that we have in the, at Oyster Bay East Norwich, only dealing with about 5% or so. So the bulk will come 89, 90% will come from, from the levy, and then we have some reserves that we have to manage. The reserves are kind of the area where you're trying to keep that for the rainy days, and this has been a year that we had to kind of be creative in our, in our budget process. So when we look at the two areas, when we look at the revenue, just to give you an idea in terms of state aid, we receive about 5.3%. And the state rate, state aid, as of right now, there is a negotiation going on, but we don't expect any reduction. So right now, hopefully we'll get the budget approved by April 1st, the, the Senate and the Assembly, and we'll receive a final number. There's been a lot of conversation about the stimulus package and, and everything that is coming from the federal government, but we also have other revenues, and, and that's reserves, fund balance, some interest, some tuition from outside students. So that is something that is, adds up to about a 6.1%, and then we have the tax levy, which is about 88.6%. In terms of a, a quick overview of what we have, compare year to year, so you see that the state aid, as of this minute, the number is promising, but as of this minute, we are, we are expected to receive 100,000 less compared to last year. The reserves, we've been using a little bit more. Last year, we used 350. This year, we're planning to use over 400. Fund balance also, a little bit, a, a little bit of difference between last year and this year, and then we have other revenues, and, and the tax levy obviously at 54,416. The total budget number, you see that budget to budget, that 1.1 million is about approximately That's the budget to budget increase. So you could see that when you're dealing with a budget of $61 million, where 89% comes from the tax levy, we have to be very careful on how we use all the other revenues, the reserves, the fund balance, and, and in the other. What we have done in the next two slides, we give a, sort of an historical review of all the, the reserves and, and the user reserves. So what we have done, we put it over the, the past two years, so we have the balances 18, 19, the reserves that were used, what was financed, and, and obviously, we kept going all the way to this year. So we'll have this slide on, on the, on the website, so for the community to see it. But I think the most important number to, to keep an eye over here is the fact that when you look at the balance and you look at the reserve, the reserves values that we have, the board has done a very, a very good job in terms of replenishing those reserves. And doing that is, it requires a lot of work, because those reserves, they have a specific rule that, there are specific regulation in terms of percentage that you're allowed to put on reserve, and what you put on reserve in each area. So that is something that the board and I'm sure the community is very proud, because you see that the numbers are, the reserves are being used, and then they're being replenished at times. So you see that the next slide continues with the 19, 20, and then look, looking at the balance of 2021, and obviously, the balance of 21, 22. One of the things about the discussion that we had with the board internally is that as we receive, as we hopefully receive a little bit more state aid, the idea is to go back to those fund balance values and reserve values, and to make sure that we go back to, to, to the previous year, to the, to the amount that we used in the previous year. So if I go back for a second to this one, right now, we are expected to receive 100,000 less on, in state aid, that first, that first line. So if we receive, I'm just using an example, $300,000, obviously, 100 will compensate that to make it equal, and then the rest would be put to the fund balance. So for example, right now, we plan to use 1.239 in fund balance, so let's say we receive 240, that will go back to, to that amount. Here's just a graph representing, so you can see visually that- Um, here is just a graph representing, so you can see visually that, uh, we have been pretty much consistent, um, in, in terms of the user reserves and, and the balance that, that we have. When you look at the allowable tax levy, um, the, the levy limit right now after the calculation of everything is a one point four. So right now, this is an important slide, I think, to appreciate the work that the board has done and, and so the community can have an understanding. So we are allowed to raise one point four, but a budget to budget increase due to, um, variables that we have very little control, um, health costs, um, pension, retirement system and, and all of the other variables. We have an increase of one point eight-six. So you see that right out of the gate, we are point four short, and that's what we have, that's the reason why we have to be creative. So allowable tax levies are one point four. That's pretty much a, um, a very simple calculation. Uh, the way it's done, it's, it's sort of an eight-step formula. You start with the previous year, uh, levy, you multiply by the, um, tax growth factor, and then you subtract the pilot and you, you just add it back and then you multiply by the CPR and, and all of that. So we, once you have this calculation, um, the, the, the final levy limit that we have, the, the calculation, it gives us a one point four. This is an important, uh, this is important work because what it does, the levy this year would be the beginning, just like the first line that you see. The levy this year would be the, the set, the first number on next year's, uh, levies calculation. So you always, um, and we have done this work with the board, we always look at two, three years down the road because what we want to do, we want to maintain that, um, we, we want to avoid that fluctuation. Um, so you keep looking at what's coming next and you're trying to predict some of the variables that we have a little, very little control. This is a little bit of, uh, a clarified version without the numbers on how do you add and subtract, multiply, so if you're interested in doing that, it's a, it's a fun thing to do. Um, but, um, I think it's fun, no? I think it's fun. But one thing, one of, uh, when I did this the first time many years ago, uh, one of the, one of the value that you add is the pilot, and I thought it was some kind of, uh, strange thing, pilot, that I didn't know it was some kind of flying thing that it was, that we had to consider, but the pilot, uh, the pilots, which for us is a big number. You're dealing with eight hundred and twenty-four expected this year and, uh, seven hundred and seventy-eight next year, but what the pilot is, i- is pretty much, it stands for payment in lieu of taxes, a very creative, uh, way. So certain commercial property owners, um, large corporations, what they do, they enter into an agreement, so instead of paying taxes, they, they have this, uh, disagreement. Uh, so this is kind of interesting because you expect it to get a certain amount, but you don't get that amount until the budget is set, so which is kind of, um, what's the American expression, put the cart before the horse, the horse before, so one of those, right? Um, so here you see that with the pilot, the, the payment in lieu of taxes that we have, that's part of the calculation, but you see that the pilot received or expected to be received this year is at to eight hundred and what we expect to, to, to receive in seven, uh, seventy-eight around that number. So you could see that you are just making, uh, an educated, uh, guess on what's coming, and that's a big part of, of the calculation. So we have done a little bit of research and, and we're confident that, uh, that number would be, uh, pretty much accurate. In terms of the revenue, a summary of revenue, so we're dealing with about six point nine million dollars in revenue and tax levy revenue about fifty-four, four sixteen, so you have a total of sixty-one, four oh nine, five oh three. So in terms of the expense side of the budget, we kind of broke down in terms of all the values that we have. Um, you see that the biggest one, the biggest expense that we have is salary and wages. Then we have benefits, transportation, debt service, BOCs, contractual service and, and all of that. And you see that year to year, um, you see the comparison and you see obviously at the end that difference of one point one million dollar. So that difference is, that one point one million dollar is the difference between the two budget, budget to budget, but when you look at the tax levy, uh, if you go back to the eight-step formula and the calculation, we're able to generate about seven hundred and, and change. So you see that we are about four hundred thousand dollars short, and that's the reason why we have to tap a little bit in, into the reserves, a little bit into, um, the, uh, other sort of revenues that we have, reserves and fund balance. So this is a nice pie chart that, that, that shows clearly that you're dealing pretty much with seventy-five percent or, or probably more of costs that you have very little control. They're, they're set by your, your contracts. Uh, the, the benefits analysis, um, here is pretty simple when you look at the ERS, Employment Retirement System and the Teacher Retirement System, those numbers are set, uh, by the state, so you see that the difference be, from one year to another. The one that is interesting is the health benefits because the health benefits, those rates, and I try to clarify in, in a simple way, but sometimes there is no simple way to clarify things. It's trying to put a square in a, uh, in a, in a circle thing, but, um, where you're dealing with the health benefits is that the rates are set with the calendar year. So the rates are set from January first to December thirty-first, but the school year budget goes from July first to June thirtieth. So what, what's happening every year is that you have to guess the second part of the year. So right now, we know the rates for sure until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. We don't know with certainty what the rates are going to be from January twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-two. So because we're building the budget, we have to guess that second part of the year. How was, how was that, Ms. Freeman? It was pretty, right? Okay, good. So that's the reason why I kind of separated the two things because you, you're creating a budget that it goes from June, from July to June, but you have to guess from January to June. Um, and so that's what we have. Last year we were very, very fortunate because the rates were at zero, less than zero. Um, this year, um, they're about four point six, so we expected a ten, which has been the number that has been, uh, for many years, was nine, ten, right? Am I correct? Eight, nine, ten? So this is all good, but the question for the community is, for the students is, what's in this budget? So this is the fun part. So when you look at the budget, what we have included in this budget proposal that we have, um, we have, um, forty thousand dollars, um, in terms of, um, the addition, remember last year, the budget, the, the board approved a, uh, full-time Chinese, Mandarin Chinese, uh, so that was a point six. So because we're proposing a, a full-time Mandarin, so we adding, uh, the other point four, which is approximately forty thousand dollars. We also have, uh, a ground equipment, uh, one of our trucks, um, has, um, pretty much is done, uh, so has stopped working. So we're proposing the buying of a new truck, which is thirty thousand dollars, and then we are also putting, uh, some COVID expense in there, about a hundred thousand dollars. Hopefully we don't need to use that. Hopefully September we'll be back to normal and, and then, uh, that goes back to fund balance. And then what we have, we have the maintenance of, um, of existing program and, and obviously that's, that's, uh, pretty much a no additional cost is, is part of a, uh, the, the, the work that we do in terms of reallocating the resource to make sure that all the programs that we have in place will continue to run. So when you look at the summary of the budget, budget to budget, one point one difference, sixty-one million. Um, I also wanted to give the board an update on capital projects that were approved in the past. So this is, uh, work that is in progress. Uh, we have an upgrade to the gas service on the west side boiler room at the high school, so that project is almost complete. I, I would say ninety percent at the time of, uh, we created this presentation, but I, I think we're almost done with that. AC, um, air conditioning in the gymnasium, uh, that work is scheduled to be completed this summer. Then we have a Theodore Roosevelt, we have, uh, toilet reconstruction right across from the gymnasium. That's expected to be done, completed in the summer twenty twenty-one. Um, everything is to, uh, has been submitted to the state and we're waiting for final approval. And, uh, Vernon, we have the playground resurfacing, that's also expected to be done in the summer of, this summer. All this work was already approved by the board last year. When you look at the capital reserve, some of the work that, um, we, we are planning to do this summer, that we're proposing to do, um, at the schools that we have, uh, the high school, we have some, uh, windows, um, work that needs to be done with, with the windows and also plaster, um, that is, uh, that needs to be done on, on walls and, and ceilings. So that's a, we had up a, a cost of fifty thousand dollars. And then at the, the other schools, um, there are some sh- shelves, uh, in the classroom, uh, that need to be, um, they need to be, uh, redone for safety reason. So we are, we are thinking of doing, um, a, a least two hundred thousand dollars worth of work, and that's at the two schools. I think we have, um, several in each, in each building, and that's for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, that will come, uh, from the capital reserve. When you look at the technology project, we want to continue with the replenishment of some of the, um, equipment that, uh, came to end of life, and we want to make sure we continue with that kind of work to make sure that, uh, every few years we replace some of the Chromebooks and the iPads, uh, that we have for our students. And the reason we want to do that is because five years from now, six years from now, we don't want to replace, uh, all of them at once. So that comes to a total of two hundred and twenty-five, four seventy-five. And, uh, as a kind of summary of what we have, in the capital reserve, we have a two point five million dollars and we expect it, we're proposing a two hundred and fifty thousand, so that will bring it to two million, two hundred and fifty. And then technology reserve, we have five hundred thousand and we are proposing that two twenty-five, so that leaves a two seventy-four, five twenty-five. Um, in terms of the budget timeline, the budget adoption is on April sixth, and, uh, the board had a time to kind of review, uh, the budget line by line. Um, so this evening is, is just reviewing some of the, the major variables that, that we have. So Ms. Kowalski, you want to open it up for the board if they have any questions?
Yes. First of all, thank you very much. It was a very detailed presentation. I don't think we've had one like that in a long time. Um, and I think you explained a lot of those terms to the community, and I really hope the community goes online and looks at this because this will be posted online on our website. Um, one question I just have, a quick one before, you know, we had, we had that, um, accident in front of Roosevelt. Is there any way, maybe the board, we need to discuss putting up some barriers in front of Roosevelt as part of the capital, um, improvements to protect against that?
Yes. So, um, we, um, right now we are, we are talking to our architectural firm to make sure that, that we look at a couple of, uh, different ideas to make sure that we create sort of, either we put plants or, you know, some other kind of safety, uh, equipment. So i- if that comes into play, what we had the accident two weeks ago, they're, they're kind of reviewing and, you know, we want to create, we want to install something, propose something that is, um, that keeps the beauty of that building and obviously, so that's something that we're working on right now.
Um, anybody else who have any questions?
I have two, Ms. Kowalski.
Yes.
Just the transportation, the hundred and nine thousand dollar increase, is that contractual? That's their increased yearly increase? I know when we added the universal busing, I know we had to add money to that. I just want to make sure that that's just the contractual number of whatever it's going up yearly.
Yes, because the, I think it was a hundred and sixty thousand from the, that proposition to, to have the universal, that's included in it, so that additional is for next year. I think we ever had a four and a half percent increase for transportation.
Okay, and my second, uh, question is, on the enhancement of our ground equipment, I know I spoke earlier, maybe Vernon's looking for a new piece of equipment for snow removal and to do work up there. I think it's in somewhere around twenty thousand. Maybe we can look into see if we can get that into the budget this year, if it's possible?
We can take a look at it.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Yanni, I know we, you don't talk?
Yes. Thank you.
Um, I know we spoke about this, but, um, regarding technology, um, and for computers, uh, most particularly, um, would we consider going out with a lease financing rather than depleting the technology reserve because the reserve, under the current proposal, the reserve would be in half, right? That not, leaving us only two hundred and fifty thousand. Could we potentially consider, given the low cost of funds right now, financing, um, technology over the next couple of years?
So we have, we have done, uh, we have done some research with the lease purchase plan, uh, which is usually a, a five-year plan. Um, and the beauty of that plan is that, um, it's a five-year plan and then, um, we receive, um, aid back, um, so that cost will kind of be a little bit of, uh, a saving in, in the long run. So we're exploring that option. So right now, what, what we want to present to the board is the total amount that is needed and, and that equipment that is needed. Um, so we are looking at a couple scenarios right now because we want to look at this year, but we also want to look at what's coming next year with the replacement of desktops and, um, that will come, you know, next year is sort of, uh, a time where we have replacement of some of those, um, other areas that, that need to kind of be upgraded a little bit. So the idea is to compare and see when are we doing large, uh, the lease purchase plan? If we put it in place this year or if we put it in place next year when there's a larger amount that we have to kind of support? So we're going to try and look at, one of the things that we're doing right now is looking at a lease purchase plan one year or maybe do a two-year, next year put two in place or maybe put one in place next year that is larger, uh, but we're looking into that. So, um, right now, we just wanted to show, we, we just want to show to the board the amount and to the community the amount and what material we plan to purchase, so.
Thank you. And Dr. Yanni, is, before we get this budget approved, you know, we were looking at class sizes because we want to make sure we maintain our class sizes at, you know, a, a, a very reasonable number. Can we have a list of the, all the classes and their sizes to see if we need to add any additional teachers before we go out for this budget?
So right now, one of the, the things that we're doing with the, with the enrollment and what we have right now, um, we don't expect a, a we don't expect a, a major change, but we can certainly provide that in terms of the rooms that we have available. I mean, some schools need some, some work and we're trying to think out of the box a little bit. But in terms of change of enrollment, we don't expect that much of a change.
Okay, because I think, just to have, I mean, I always, always like to know, keep an eye on the class sizes. Because we were surprised one year that the class sizes went, you know, fairly high and we didn't know about it. So if we could just, you know, at least maybe once a year, figure out what our class sizes are. And so the board can always reevaluate whether we like it at that or whether we want, you know, less students in a class. Because that's something we had also discussed and whether we can do that in this budget or not.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
And as far as high school offerings go, like have the principals like made a determination that like, is there anything that we need to offer that we believe colleges are looking for? That, you know, has this been thought about and included in the budget too? You know, I don't know if there's any change of curriculum that maybe they were thinking when that was necessary.
In terms of the curriculum AP courses, I don't, you know, maybe Dr. Mohol, you want to?
Sure.
Just add a little bit?
So there are a couple of new courses that we offer, but we didn't, one, we're waiting to see if they're going to run. And two, we're not sure, they're, they're not going to cause a budget increase. So we would just be able to meet the needs of those classes if they were to run with our current FTEs. So we didn't include it here, but you will get a list in the summer of any of those courses that might, sometimes the newer ones are a little bit smaller. And so we bring that list to you at the August meeting so that you can see it and we can talk about, you know, where we are with each of those.
Have we thought about AP macroeconomics at all?
There is a new AP human geography. So that's the, the class that, so students had come forward and asked for that one a couple of years ago. And we explored it, but we didn't have the interest. But then more students came forward. So we wanted to see if we could give that a try this year. But we're always open to, to, I don't have off the top of my head what some of the other ones were, but we're always looking to see what we can offer, what we can enhance, that our courses, our students are going to love, be passionate about and, and will help introduce them to topics that they might want to explore further later or just have a, are curious about.
Well, just to enhance our business programs, you know, it'd be nice to have, because we don't have any AP course really for business kids, right? Yeah. So I mean, that's just something maybe we should explore.
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, many students that are in college have had exposure to economics, had the opportunity to get college credit for economics. I think that would be one area that we should definitely look into for the following year. Maybe not for, I, I don't know if it's for this budget cycle, but.
If we could consider, see if there's interest. I mean, you might want to ask these, these business kids if they would take that, you know? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, the budget presentation is on the website, so please feel free to go and review it. You'll see that Dr. Yanni did a great job. It's very detailed. If you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be willing to answer them.
Thank you.
The next thing is the personnel actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolutions as listed. And that goes down to the bottom of page three. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Down to business actions. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following business resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second? Any discussion?
I'd like to ask a question regarding the class of twenty twenty. There's still a balance in that account? The class of twenty twenty fund, they graduated. I'm not sure what would happen with those funds.
Yeah, I think it was decided that they were, if I recall properly, that they were going to leave it until a decision was made. But I'll look into that and I'll get back to you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Special services. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following special services resolutions as listed. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following new business resolutions as listed. And that goes down to page six. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. The, the Health and Welfare Services Agreement contract for various schools and various other districts, what, what kind of services would these entail? Where another public school district would, would be giving these services to a, a private school student?
Which one?
Yeah, it's the, the school district that the private school is located in is responsible for going there. You know, bringing nurse there, do dental, physical, you know, anything that's really needed to cover them. Psychological, if something happened.
So for example, do we give some, do we provide services to a, a local private school in our district? I've never heard of that.
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're responsible for that.
Okay, I know we're responsible. Does it actually happen?
You know, in most cases, it doesn't happen, but this is something that school districts are allowed to do. So I have always been against this, but it's, they're allowed to do it. So they, you take your total costs for nursing, psychological and so on, and then you divide it by the number of students that you have in your district plus the, the private schools. And then you're allowed to bill for every student from another district that attends that school.
So we have students in this district that attend Saint Anne's and now Converse School in part of the city. Is it a category each school? But we have somebody who's here today. Is that what this is?
And the health services different, they charge different for every, every school?
Yeah, it depends on what, you know, what that district's costs are. So a very, you know, like a Jericho, I probably shouldn't say that.
Sure.
You know, if their costs are high.
Can you see if we have any examples of when this was ever used?
Whether, whether the, the services were actually supplied? They don't have to prove that. They just have to be there. You know, like if nine eleven happened and you had to run over to Saint Dominique's or somewhere and, and cover that, that's, that's basically the premise for it. Or if they need a nurse.
Can I have a little page? Does that really seem like it? Do you get more of that than I? Do they tell you what students that?
Yes, yes. And we verify that there are students.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. And then tennis discussion, Dr. Yanni?
The discussion?
No? Okay. Then the Friday packet. Any questions on Friday packet?
Mrs. Kowalski, the meeting with Dr. Lafferson?
Yes.
That was a great meeting. He was very supportive for us. Another lot of questions for him. And I know he'll definitely get back to us and help us anyway. Especially when people talk to him and suddenly those students.
Right, and, and.
He was great, great. So thank you for him for getting it.
Yes, and he also, to all the parents who are listening, offered internships to our students. Apparently, we have a lot of students that do it now. And he really would love to have more students interning with him for the summertime, which seems like a great opportunity. It was what, three days a week and pizza on every Friday, I think?
And the, the nicest thing that he said, that they're not there just to get coffee. They do real work and it's exciting.
Yeah, and also on that too, Senator Goran was, was a very interesting discussion with him as far as enabling us to apply, apply for grants. And he was very open to Oyster Bay School District. And he's met with us several times before. And we really appreciate the close relationship we have with him now, working with him.
I'd also like to, again, just thank our administration, all of our teachers, our staff for bringing back all of the students into our, the building, meaning our ninth through twelfth graders. As a parent of a high schooler, my daughter was thrilled to be back. And so thank you all. I know it was a lot of hard work and we appreciate all that the administration, the teachers and the staff are doing.
Thank you.
Yes, I second that. Any other further questions on Friday packet?
Can I ask a question with the kid, with all the students back in? Are, are we allowing students to go to the cafeteria yet? Or like what do high school students do?
Some are going to the cafeteria. I, I see them.
Yes, so, but not that many. So the seniors, we have an open campus. The students, most seniors and many juniors can leave. And then we have the gymnasium.
Because it, the dedication from Lafferson was so great because he, he put all that money into that beautiful cafeteria space. And it would just be nice if we could start to open it up. I, I don't know if we've thought about with those booths, maybe putting some glass barriers or something just so that we could actually utilize the space.
I'm excited to see it as it was intended to be used.
Yeah.
I also noticed that the, the traffic flow to high school is much better with the.
Oh, thank you.
With the one-way signs. And it's just a matter of us constantly trying to make things better. And measures like that do have a, do have an impact.
Yeah. We put those signs and we also put those signs in the middle of the street. And a lot of mornings outside and you could see that, you know, there is a, a little bit of change in the pattern and but it's been good. It was difficult with the amount of snow that we had, but now that it's clear, I think it's getting better and better. So I want to thank the community for their patience on.
And there's been some comments from the community that you're always out there, Dr. Yanni.
Thank you.
Which we all love and showing up to all of our sporting events.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.